Good evening, and welcome to tonight's Council of the Hall Meeting of the Southbridge Town Council. It's Tuesday, April 25th, 2023. It's 7:05 PM. We're here in the McKinnon Council Chambers, and this meeting is being recorded by both video and audio means. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Daniel is here. Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Lozlo.
Here.
Counselor Mikehead is excused. Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Rivas. Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Steves is excused. Very good, we have six present, I believe. One, two, three, six. Very good. Before we begin tonight's discussion, I have some prepared remarks that I'd like to read, and then we'll begin the process of the meeting. Good evening. I wish to take a moment to make a few remarks before we begin the discussion of tonight's topics. I want to begin by saying that this discussion was called because of the need to get information out to not only the school community, but to the entire greater community of Southbridge. The town council has an obligation to all citizens of Southbridge. Just as a parent develops fear of the unknown when a child becomes ill, so are the people of Southbridge when it comes to their school district. People want information which I am sure will allow them to make informed decisions regarding their feelings surrounding the status of the schools. This is evidenced by the fact that as of April 23rd, the most recent school committee meeting had received over 400 views on the SCTV YouTube site, and the most recent town council meeting had received over 320 views. This does not take into account those people watching on the local cable access channels. With the help of Vice Chairperson David Adams, I invited many officials to come to tonight's discussion with the intent of providing the best information to our citizens. I wanted everyone to feel welcome to be here and speak directly to the people, to give our citizens the facts from their firsthand knowledge. We need to stop working from a place of speculation. What better way than to ask those with the firsthand knowledge for the information we are looking for? As a result, either directly or through the government websites, I invited the following officials to be here. A representative from the governor's office, the Secretary of Education, Dr. Patrick Tutwiler, the Commissioner of Education of Elementary and Secondary Education, Jeffrey Riley, State Senator Ryan Fatman, State Representative Peter Durant, Receiver Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jeffrey Vallar. I received replies from some officials, but not all, expressing either regrets or their possible attendance by themselves or a representative. Therefore, tonight, the following official is here, and that is a representative of Senator Fatman's office. We're pleased to have Amanda Galanak-Helyer here, who will be taking back our concerns to Senator Fatman. So far, that's the only official that's able to make it. Just to be safe, is there anyone here that is representing an official I previously mentioned that I've missed? I understand that people are busy or have family commitments, but so do the members of the town council, as well as the citizens of Southbridge. We need answers and information. Direct, open, and honest information coming from those in the best position to provide it to the entire town. It was the intention of the Chair and Vice Chair to use this venue to provide that by providing this meeting as a safe and supportive arena. My personal opinion, and again I repeat, my personal opinion, is that we have been stymied in that cause. I am frustrated that those of us who want civil dialogue are seemingly pushed aside. That serves no purpose other than to make it more difficult to get out all information and to assure that all sides are being heard. It also makes it more difficult to formulate informed opinions and decisions. As evidenced by the talking points listed for tonight's meeting, there are many areas of concern that need to be addressed that involve the school district and/or the citizens, taxpayers directly. No one has ever told me that they don't support the school district and the students. However, they want to know exactly what they are supporting, why it is this way or that way, and how much the cost will be and how that is being formulated. Those are fair concerns, and those who ask of our citizens have an obligation to provide answers to those concerns, even if it means saying it over and over and over so that eventually everyone hears what the message is. The students are our children, and we have the ultimate responsibility to care and provide for them. We cannot do this if we are left alone when we are asking for help and then, and those who can help are unable or unwilling to do so. I was hoping that this would be a venue to discuss individual issues, not to discuss individual issues, that's best served on an individual basis, but rather an opportunity to share dialogue and general overarching concerns. We'll start first with comments from Vice Chair David Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank you for actually putting this meeting on this evening and for the residents, teachers, and staff members of the public for attending this evening. The intent when, after we had the issue with the firearm at the school, the intent was never to lambast the receivership. I think I made that very clear from the beginning. But my intent at this point in time is, we all need to grow up. We all, as a community, have to grow up and figure out how we're going to take this, our school system back through a process and a plan. When I took a look at this, one of my goals this year was to take a look at the schools and do whatever I possibly could to bring the schools back to our control again with a plan and working with the receivership and with the state. I made that goal for myself because last year, a year and a half ago, there was a meeting, a secret meeting, only certain people were allowed to attend with the commissioner. Not people that were against him, not people that were all for him, but only certain individuals that may, you know, support their cause. I do know, and I'm not here to point fingers at individuals, I do know a former counselor that went there and attended that and made it very clear to the commissioner, the amount of money, and I'm not verbatim here, by the way, the amount of money we put into the system, amount of money the taxpayers of the state have put into the system are not really showing the progress where it needs to be. We still have the turnover rate we had in 2015, 2016. The town cannot sit there and not act like it's not our fault either because I've done plenty of research from 2004 before that, all the way to 2015, where there's smoke, there's fire. But, with that being said, we're here now. And how do we, as the town council, residents, that are sitting out here tonight, people that are watching from TV right now and who will watch this meeting later on, how do we come together and get these schools back with a concerted effort to the state? With a concerted effort from the state? I have never missed words. I do like the receiver, and I do support the receiver in so many ways that I think he and his staff have done some great jobs. But then there's the issue of communication. Just because we sit up in here, we live our lives as politicians, as town counselors, in the camera. You, most of you come here and watch, and you'll see us argue and disagree. But I would say, at the same time, for those that are throwing stones at glass houses, if you were up here too, I bet you'd be in the, falling under the same footsteps sometimes because we're human and we disagree. I want the state to come here and have a conversation with us. Be honest brokers, you are not, this to the state, you are not above us at all. You need to come to the table as well. You, Mr. Commissioner, were supposed to come here in the fall and have a conversation with us. Yet, it is now springtime. I am enjoying the fact that maybe there's a plan in place to take it back over over time in the next couple of years with the new plan, but that time is already moving along. It's already halfway through since the plan was enacted here last year. So where is it at? Where are we doing? We have an advisory group. We don't hear from the advisory group, and I'm not lambasting them because they are residents of our town, they want best for our students and our school system. But if you're going to have an advisory group, maybe you should allow the power of the advisory group to push that information flow out to the public, including yours truly, the town council. I was very disappointed that we had an incident at the school, and it took a long time. And I want to thank the police department of our community for getting that word out. I want to also thank the union for pushing the envelope and getting it out there in the newspaper because my fear at that point in time would have been we would never have heard of all this information if it wasn't for the chief, his men and women of this community who serve our community, and I don't know how long that would have gone. As the Chair had mentioned just a few seconds ago, communicate, 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 all that kind of stuff. Why? Because that feeds the beast, that feeds the information flow, and it stops the rumors in its track. You know, and I appreciate the chief in offering a lot of information to the parents, to the teachers, being out there on the front lines. The first night we were, I think after that broke, he got up here. He was the only one who got up here and spoke about what happened, good or bad, spoke about it. We didn't see the state here having a conversation with us. We had our own chief, and I appreciate that. Again, I would say, I don't want to keep pointing fingers. I think somehow or another, us and the state have to get together, and this is the best form to do it. The intent tonight was actually sit around a roundtable so we're all at the same level, having a professional conversation with agreements and sometimes disagreements. Lastly, I feel at this point in time with some of the things that are happening here, and I do think there are good things happening within the school district itself, but we have to partake in it as well. But after the email that we had received from the receiver, I felt like it was, "Just shut up and give us your money, and be quiet, and let us do our job and move along, and we'll hand it over to you when you want." My point at this point, I want to see the state, and I want to see them here. I want us to have the conversation. Regardless if we agree with them or not, at least you owe us a good concerted effort to work with us, period. So that's at this point in time. I appreciate the talking points, and I'm sure we'll have great conversation this evening about this. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me a few seconds to talk. Thank you.
Very good. For the purposes of informing the audience that's here this evening and the viewership at home, I'd like to tell you what the talking points were generally that were distributed to the people beforehand so that it wouldn't be a surprise. We didn't want to ambush anyone, we didn't want to take advantage of anyone, but rather the talking points were distributed ahead of time to people so that they could know what was going to be discussed tonight, so they could formulate their answers based upon what we were looking for as concerns. The first topic would have been receivership, the purpose of receivership, evidences of progress since 2016, and most importantly, I think personally, is the path to return the district to the town. At some point, we need to know an endgame. I specifically have asked for that from a number of people, from a number of officials, and I don't get a specific answer. And I was hoping that tonight's discussion would facilitate that. The second main talking point would have been emergency preparedness, not only in terms of what happens recently, but just generally making sure that our students are safe and secure and being taken care of. I think that that's an overarching concern that the people in town have. That's been the impression that I've gotten from speaking with people in town. So I thought it was a fair point. Not to be harped on, but I thought that the people in town need to know that we are in fact taking care of their children. The third talking point would have been impact of Student Opportunity Act and other legislation on the Southbridge Public Schools and the town's general budget. For those of you who are not familiar, very recently, there was an act passed called the Student Opportunity Act, which very basically, and I stand to be corrected if I'm wrong, and perhaps someone here can correct me, the Student Opportunity Act basically is increasing the amount of aid that the town has to contribute every year until 2028, I believe, to the general budget of the school department. I'm all for funding the schools. However, when you're talking 6% and 7% increases, that has an effect on the town's side of the budget, and we need to be prepared for that, not only this year, but in the coming years. We have a responsibility to protect all the town as far as that goes. And I'm not saying that we should not fund the schools. I am not saying that. But people need to understand what the potential impact is, and they need to understand what the law is and what the mandates are. Because the schools are only asking, to the best of my knowledge, the schools are only asking for what the law says that they need to receive. But a lot of that is based on the Student Opportunity Act. The fourth point would have been hiring, recruitment, and retention of staff because the general concern of the population at large is that it's a revolving door in some of the school buildings. And I wanted to offer an opportunity to the powers that be, the officials in the district and outside of the district, to explain what it is that they are doing, how their retention levels have changed over the last few years, and the way I understand it, they've gotten better. Contrary to some opinion and some belief, retention levels have gotten better, but to what extent, I'm not completely certain. And also in terms of diversity. We have diverse population in town, we have a diverse student population, and by rights, I believe that they should have a diverse representation of their faculty and staff. And I just want to see and hear exactly what it is that's going on as far as that is concerned. And that has been an issue in terms of what people are concerned about. The fifth talking point that I had for this evening was capital needs. I think it's important to understand the planning being done by the Southbridge Public Schools. We have old buildings, we have one new building, newer building, but we have three older buildings. And capital expenses are coming down the road toward us. And I think it's only fair that the entire town, all the taxpayers, have an understanding as to what the needs are that are based upon what the school system is finding out. I don't think it should be a surprise to us. I think we should understand what it is that's coming. In a similar way as from the Student Opportunity Act, what is it that the schools are going to need to take care of the buildings? Because we want safe and secure buildings for our students, buildings that also meet the standards of the 21st century. If we want our students to succeed in the world, they need to have the same advantages that other districts have in terms of educating the students, and the facilities are one of the advantages that the students need to have. I wanted to know what enrollment trends were and their impacts, and how the enrollment trends have an impact on what the capital needs are. There's rumors about buildings and not buildings, and expansions and contractions. Let's find out what exactly it is that's going on, what people do know, what people don't know. And I was hoping to get questions of that sort answered as well. So those were the five talking points that I was hoping to go over this evening with the officials from the school district and from outside of the school district and from Boston. Again, they were all given them ahead of time. This wasn't going to be an ambush, this was not going to be a setup by any stretch. And I resent the implication that it was, frankly. So let's start with the council. Are there any councils that would like to make comments? Counsel Lozlo?
I was yielding to Rivas.
Okay, Counsel Rivas.
I am highly disappointed that we don't see any of our officials here from the state. I was hoping that, you know, at least someone would show up to support our community. You know, that is the responsibility of our officials, to support all of our students across the Commonwealth, and our families and our students deserve better, and our community deserves better than empty chairs in front of us. I do have a lot of questions that, I am one of the members of the Receiver's Advisory Board, and I have been since I worked for the school system. But in that capacity, as well as the school committee, we ask questions, and we ask the same questions, and we don't get a lot of information in return. We've asked about student representation that for many, many years, we know that we had on the school committee. And when the advisory board was first created, there was a student representative on that advisory board. There hasn't been one in a long time. Students need a voice. Students need representation at all levels. It is their education. They do have a right to have their opinions heard. That is something that I know that the school committee has advocated for, and we have advocated for it, asked for that on the advisory board. In relation to some of the topics on our agenda today, some of the questions are questions that we have also asked the receiver in regards to representation and diversity in staff. We have received information about the percentages. When we've asked for a breakdown, there's a difference between saying that 15% of your staff are people of color, but when you listen to, you want to know a breakdown, how many of those people are educators in front of our students in the classroom? How many of the people are administrators who are role models for our students? So our students can know that they can attain those positions. We have a shortage in educators across the country. It is important in our community for all of our students to see themselves in leadership. And we don't know the numbers. We don't know exactly who makes up that 12%. So we do get some data, but there isn't a lot of detail in the data. As far as the Student Opportunity Act, it is designed to help communities that are in need, like ours, that have a lot of need. But there is a caveat, right? So as the state aid increases, the match that the community has to give also increases. So that does harm our community, where we have a lot of different competing needs that our residents, you know, we have to be considerate about our tax base and the burden that we put on our residents. And so having an increase in that matching for the Student Opportunity Act, that is going to have a negative impact on a community like ours because we have a lot of different needs. And I do support a lot of the community aspects that the receiver and his staff have implemented. I do see a lot of his staff in a different capacities in community agencies and coalitions where they work with families and they work with our social service agencies to help our families and provide services for our students. In that aspect, you know, I do give the receiver credit. But it doesn't negate accountability. And as a leader in our community, as leaders here, we have an obligation to hold people accountable. Just as we hold every department accountable and the town manager accountable, we are under an obligation to hold the receiver accountable for the things that we need answers to. And so those two things can exist at the same time because that is for our students. I will support things that are helpful to our students, like City Connects, 21st Century, those programs help our students. I'm not going to cut off our nose to spite our face. Those are our families, and we need to support those programs. But we also need to know the level of training that the leadership in every building has, the turnover rate. Okay, so we have consistency in superintendent and receiverships. At the high school, I can count maybe four or five principals in the last few years. That is an issue, and we need to know how that is going to be addressed. And the reports from families that came here a few weeks ago talking about discipline and the disparate ways that discipline is enforced and not enforced is an issue, and we need to know the answers at how that is going to be addressed. So there has to be transparency and accountability in every way, shape, or form. The voters hold us accountable, and we have to hold our leaders in our community accountable.
Counsel Ryan.
Yeah, I thought Counsel Lozlo was next.
Oh, that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to thank you, Chairman Daniel and Vice Chair Adams, for organizing this meeting, getting the word out. This is an important, a bunch of important issues. And I appreciate the list of talking points so we don't surprise anyone. This is really frustrating. As someone who's been involved in working with the school system these last six years now, it's really frustrating to watch the lack of communication coming from the district. And a lot of the issues that have come up over the last recent months could have been handled if more detailed communication had come out forthright. That didn't happen. Here we are now, left with speculation. No one here, other than, I will say thank you to Senator Fatman's office for sending somebody. But unfortunately, the leaders who make these decisions are not here from the state. And that shows how little they care to be here and listen to what's happening, hear from parents when they have stuff going on and they're hearing things from their kids. It shows how little they care to actually work collaboratively with us when every time we try to ask for information, we have to file a Freedom of Information Act just to actually get the information, and when we do get it, it's not the full information that we're requesting. This piecemeal approach is causing division. We need details, and we need them when these incidents happen. We need an exit plan. They had this huge event. All these officials came here to put us into receivership. Yet they can't be here to work with us, to come up with an exit plan, or to at least provide us some details to what their grand plan may be. That's unacceptable. When they have all the power, all of the responsibility, they like to claim that they have all this influence and that they're the ones that make this decision. But when it comes down to being here and being accountable, they are not. That's not leadership. And it's really sad to see that so many people are here because they care, but the people who have the biggest impact on our children's education are not. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for organizing this tonight. The community needs to know, and at least we'll be able to hear what the community has to say.
Counsel Lozlo.
Where do you begin? Well, usually it's always safe to say what was the history, where we were, where we are, and where we want to go. Tonight is a bad, bad meeting without anybody from the state because there's nobody listening except for Senator Fatman's aide. And that's fine, at least there's one set of ears in the room to take the word back to Boston. Because when you get on that side east of 128, it's, the ears shut off to the western part of the state. It's been like that for years. As we sit here tonight with concerned parents, department heads, teachers... As we sit here tonight with concerned parents, department heads, teachers, if you just take a little walk back in history, when we were ready to appoint a new superintendent to the Southbridge School System and the day before we were going to appoint the new superintendent, they took us over. This superintendent, this person went on to be the superintendent of Northbridge. And then when the deterioration of the school district came, the mass exodus out of, because once you go into receivership, there was a mass exodus of teachers, they ended up in Northbridge. I go to Northbridge and I see Southbridge. This was the plan of the state, design of takeover. When they came here, they put every veteran teacher on notice. They put them on a list and they were going to screen them and remove the ones they thought should be removed with the wave of their hands. No union protection, no evaluate, it was just, it was roughshod. How many veteran teachers hit the panic button and redied? We lost a lot of teachers right in the beginning. Who mentors our new teachers if our veteran teachers left? Then the revolving door started at the receivership and then the principals and then the teachers and it just continued. And they thought they could run the Southbridge School System better than Southbridge. And the one thing they've proved is they can. We have went backwards. I got on the Southbridge Town Council. Jack Dovin was chairman for three years. I was under Jack and I, I'm very good friends with him, served him on school committee and council. Two years, I'd been under the tutelage of John Daniels and I basically kept it even keel, always paying over minimum school expenditure because the community had to show that we are serious about turning our district around. Then we turn around and we look at the turnaround plan that keeps evolving every three years, three more years, three more years. Yet you pick up some of the stats and you're second from the bottom in the MCAS testing and that's a requirement for graduation. But then they're telling us the graduation numbers and then the school choice hit us. This has been a roller coaster ride backwards. Now, I can be sitting in a restaurant or an establishment, whether it be getting haircut or lunch or whatever, and a teacher will sit down that actually lives in town and some live out of town, but they work in town. And then they tell me the stories of what's going on on the ground in, in the Southbridge School System. The thing that bothered me probably the most, we had a Level One high school. We had a Level Three middle school and two elementary, three elementary schools were Level Two. That is not the level by the state standard allows anybody to take over your district. But they did anyways and they just labeled us. Once you're labeled, there's a major decline in staff, major decline in qualified students, don't want to go here, parents run to Sturbridge, to Shepherd Hills, surrounding towns because of school choice. You can't blame them. Then we have a, a, a school committee that has been sticking together. I give the school committee a lot of, a lot of credit. And then I talked to some of my fellow colleagues up here and they say, school committee needs training. Well, the way I was trained when I got on the school committee was the superintendent of schools, in this case would be the receiver. And if you wanted to learn about curriculum, you went to a curriculum subcommittee and the curriculum director would come to the meeting and explain why they wanted this curriculum and they wanted to be these textbooks, this technology and they did sit there. You would learn a tremendous amount of stuff from the professionals and that's how school committee members garner a lot of experience and knowledge. So moving forward and seeing the divide between the school committee or a lack of a school committee in the beginning, because nobody would run and sit in the seats. Again, everybody's talking about, let's show the state that we can put a school committee up there and that we can be solvent, we can look at us, we're doing well. It's almost like we're on a behavior course for the Department of Education, but they don't give an inch. They're not here tonight. I'm a construction guy. I'm kind of, kind of simple. I always thought that if you're going to do something, there's a blueprint. You're going to build a building, you have a blueprint, you build your building. In a takeover, they had this, they, they violated their own rules to take us over and then there's no dismount. How do you get out of underperforming in a state of mass excuses? There is nothing written, no blueprint to say, Southbridge, I'll tell you what we're going to do. You gotta hit this, you gotta do that, you gotta do this, you gotta do that. We have no control over this. The only thing this council has control over is the bottom line. So when we, we get together as a school committee or a council and we, we want our district back. Southbridge economically will not recover as well as anybody else as long as they are underperforming or in receivership. So looking forward, the first thing I said was, as a guy that's been around a while in politics, what, what, what can we do to make this right? A lot of people say we have to have a conversation. We've been having a conversation for eight years. A lot of people believe they can make that difference. I sat back, shut my mouth and said, give, give it a chance. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe somebody else can get the job done. Well, here we are, spinning our wheels, having a conversation and nothing's moving in the right direction. Three things I thought of, I said, geez, you know, if I was running this as a business, you know, you could file a class action suit and sue the state and try and get this as illegal damages to our town, our students. Economic sanctions, cut the bottom line because most of their money goes to the top management. Ballot question, the very hearing that we had at Southbridge High School Auditorium was the reason they used, well, we have unhappy citizens, they're saying, take over our district. Okay, we're going to have a ballot question, it's going to be on June's ballot. The people of Southbridge are going to get the vote to take over their school. We want to take our school district back. I would love to be in the room with the commissioner to sit there and just say, wouldn't you rather have Southbridge run itself with massive oversight by the state? Not be under a dictatorship? Dictatorships never work anywhere. It becomes divisive between management and rank and file workers, the families, the kids. I mean, we talk about withholding kids and holdback. We got 20-year-old kids at the senior, up at the senior high with a gun in the bathroom. Nobody's going to tell me that's like the right thing that, to be happening in a school. It's a learning institution. We've made schools more of a social institution. On our high school side, they have a college that eats up a certain amount of square footage. I was chairman of that building committee, I built that building with a group of fellas and ladies that did a great job. We had a state-of-the-art high school, middle high school. There's no reason why you shouldn't be teaching with what was handed to them, but when the state took over, it slid down and here we are, talking about it again. I personally think that if, if our state officials or the governor doesn't see this as, as a wrong, they need to see it as a wrong. I want to hold up a ballot question saying 90% of Southbridge says we want to take our district back. That's the only way. I always thought in a democracy, the strongest thing is its people, you, the people. So going forward, there's plenty of stones to throw on who did what and, you know, the report said. I've never seen a more fudging of statistics as when they took us over. The stuff that was going on was, was unbelievably false, but it was enough to paint their picture to accomplish their mission. Eight years later, seven years later, here we are and we're talking about it and we, we don't want to be underperforming. I mean, we, I mean, education's pretty simple. Reading, writing and arithmetic, if it's a learning institution. If it's a social institution, well, then there's a whole bunch of other stuff comes into your school that you might not want in the school because it doesn't belong in a learning institution. But we have to make that decision as a society and not as a, as a council. We talk about teachers, diversity. We've been a diverse community forever. I'm an Albanian and I used to be a minority when it was dominantly French. I walked down Main Street and all you heard was French and, and we, we like, whoa, I know what that is. But we were always a melting pot. I went to high school with all kinds of ethnicity and I loved it. We were Southbridge. We were red and white, our pride. We need to bring that back. We need that, that qualified teacher. I never saw a, a teacher of color or a teacher of, of Chinese, white or whatever. I thought whoever was the most qualified teacher should be in front of that classroom. And we have a lot of qualified people, but they dwindle when they leave. Why do I have to put up with what I'm putting up with here when I can go one town over and not have the headaches and get more pay? I mean, it, there's a lot of accountability and oversight that you, those are the paramount words nowadays in politics. Oversight, accountability and transparency, three biggest words used by politicians. Ask them, what have you done for the people lately? Then you'll have a conversation about facts. What did we do? We need to be held accountable. I want to hear from people. I hear all the time about what goes on in our school system and I'm not happy. The number one word, frustration. We're handcuffed, we can't do anything as a council. When somebody does something wrong in a school district, the gun incident, the administrator was wrong, I went to the meeting at the high school, he admitted, Mr. Valar admitted, it's my fault, I will handle it. They transfer the administrator to a curriculum position at same pay. They take a principal out of one building, which the state said Eastford Road was one, one of the buildings that was up the park. That administrator got moved out. The chess pieces constantly move to COLAV. How many managers do you need to educate a child? I think we need teachers to educate a child. So moving forward, maybe I'm just a dinosaur, but I got to tell you, this school system was a fantastic school system and now it's not. My daughter is a doctor because of Southbridge High, because of Ellie Trembling, a teacher. My daughter Sam is a teacher in an all-black district and she's white. And she turned around and said, Dad, and she's my little woman, fuzzy liberal daughter compared to my conservative daughters. She said, education, if we just stick to education and forget all the other stuff, we'd be fine. I said, well, let me tell you, you're the next generation. It's your turn to step up to the plate and make the difference. I try my best. I know I'm blunt sometimes because I argue with some of the counselors who are my very good friends. Everybody wants a tiptoe around the white elephant in the room without talking about an issue. I'm not that guy. I don't dress it up. I want to tell you the truth, tell you how it is, let's digest it and solve the problem. You, if we dance around and not identify a problem, how do you solve it? I don't know how to solve a problem. In my business, I go right at it. This is a problem. I make it go away and I don't have a problem anymore. Moving forward, I, I am open to any suggestions. The only thing I can say is we have a ballot question and each and every citizen in this town should vote yes on that ballot question to send a message, they're not here to hear us. So let's get that ballot question and go to the governor's office and go to the Department of Ed and just say, well, we've had enough, it's not working, we need to get a new design on how to come out of underperforming. Send some of our members here to be on a state committee to figure it out with those other districts that are having the same problem. Holyoke's been taking over a lot longer than us. And again, it's a blueprint to come out of it that doesn't exist. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Counsel Muntigney.
Thank you. I've said a lot of this before, but since we're here tonight and hopefully falling under the ears of some state officials, I'd like to kind of let you all know what Southbridge School System has done for me in my lifetime. Growing up, I wouldn't say that I was necessarily bullied, but I will tell you that where I put my love into certain things, it came back to me full circle from my teachers in the school system of Southbridge and, and that pioneer pride that we all talk about, okay? There was never anybody there for me and my friends as much as the teachers that taught my parents at the time. This school district was fantastic and all of a sudden we get to my junior year, 2004, 2005, and they're talking about how we're being moved to a Level Four district and that we're not going to be able to get into the schools that we want to get into. And I didn't believe that. I said, there's got to be another way, there's going to be a way to stop this from happening. And sure enough, everybody got into the schools that they wanted to get into. So the writing was on the wall to me, my senior year, watching my peers and myself go where we want when they told us we couldn't. It was deceit from the beginning. I kind of made a crusade of mine to come back to Southbridge after college and try to help stop the receivership. I used to band together lots of different groups of people, partially because I used to be the station manager here for the local access. We were able to broadcast positive things about the town and I got the opportunity to work at the middle high school, actually in all the buildings, but as somewhat of like a media director, where we, we had television production classes and we were able to produce more positive things about the town. Some of which, actually the curriculum that I delivered was added into the, the final hour when we got taken over in 2015, 2016, there was evidence submitted to stop the receivership. And I was honored to have been a small piece of that with the student body, the pioneer television, Southbridge Community Television, you know, we did as much as we could. And this is a very abridged version of the story, but the school came, the, the state came, we went to COLAV, all the citizens got together, most came in there and said, please help our, our students. And it seemed at the last second where I thought everybody was going to say, we need to stop the receivership and not let it happen. It, it started to paint a picture to the Board of Education who came to Southbridge that maybe they did need to take over. And while a lot of us came out, a lot of people in this room, it just, it didn't stick. I took a personal day the next day and went to see the Board of Education take us over in Roxbury. At that point, I, I did tender my resignation because I did not want to work for these people anymore because I, I knew the deceit that was about to come. But later in life, I decided to give it a try again, 2019, and teach science. I was able to, I was given an opportunity by the current Dr. Valar. He gave me a waiver to teach and I held up my end of the bargain and got certified. But the numbers that they would present to us at these meetings would come out all doctored up and I, I even called them out on it one time with a round of applause from the, the teachers, but not the administration. And, and sure enough, after a year, I found myself going to Northbridge too, to go work for Amy McKinstry, who was our, the principal that hired me at the first time. She's now superintendent of a successful district. And as I've sat on school committee, I sit here at the town council, I hear the very disappointing news from Chairman Daniel and Vice Chairman Adams about how the Dr. Valar has responded to this, how officials haven't come out, and I do appreciate the Senator Fatman representative here tonight very much. The deceit isn't going to stop. It's been happening since the beginning. It's happened all the way through, it's going to continue. It's really too bad that it took a gun to rally us all together to be talking like this because somebody could have got killed. And it's been evident and on the wall right in front of our faces since the beginning. This is a politically charged and politically motivated takeover and as you can see, they don't care, they're not here. So what I want to do moving forward after tonight is have some sort of plan from us. And I have to just mention, the previous speaker said something about how the Southbridge staff was on a list as soon as they got here and a lot of the people got, drove out. If you look at the website, DOE Mass Education, a DOE.MASS.edu, it says under question 19 of receivership questions, it says, the commissioner has said that there will not be mass firings of Southbridge staff. It's right here, I'm reading it. Another lie, just constant deceit. So moving forward, we have a vote on June 13th for the non-binding question to take back the schools. If it comes out 80, 90%, that would be fantastic. And I want this council on June 26th to do a vote of no confidence at the last meeting in the State of Massachusetts receivership. We have to do something and the next year, July 1st, next fiscal year, we have to hit this problem hard and we need to do everything we can to get the schools back. Maybe I'll stand corrected and the citizens of this town are not going to vote yes, but I highly doubt that. We need to band together now and from this meeting, we need to come with a strategy. We can't vote tonight, but I'd like to see the promises from this council that if there is a mandate from the citizens of this town, that we support the same view of our citizens and we put a vote of no confidence in. And that's not going to fix anything, but that's the, that's what we can start and hopefully tonight's meeting doesn't fall on deaf ears because there's been a lot of reasons floating around about why they took over. And shame on the state for using our children as a Petri dish for their little game. They've ruined a community. The property values in this town compared to others are terrible and it is a direct result of this town being in school receivership. Shame on the State of Massachusetts and- Shame on the state of Massachusetts and, and the commissioner at the time. Thank you.
Counselor Dow. Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair Truul. I'm going to say a few things. I don't know if it's going to make any difference tonight, but the state, they think they're not touchable. They're better than anybody. Like the previous counselors say, shame on them. They have no respect for the residents of Southbridge or the council that was elected from the citizen. They want a better education. They need to start respect us first. And I think that's where the beginning starts. If they have no respect, how they're going to teach our children to be a better student in respect to each other. Last year, we have an incident. Kid was bullied and happened, didn't take no action. I don't want to go details, you know, memory, bad memory. And this year we have their guns and they're still, they have no, they don't, they don't, they don't come in, they don't explain, they have no respect. I think time for the citizen of Southbridge to show him, we are something. We need to get together and stand one hand and tell the state, get out of our town. We can run it ourselves. We don't need you anymore. Guys, vote on June 13th. Yes, please. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Adams.
Just want to quick note before we move on. Everybody that was emailed had an opportunity to change the date or ask for a change of date. There was no hard date at that point in time. And nobody came back. Now, there were representatives who said, we've got a budget hearing going on this day, whatever it may be, but we're leaving it up to them to say, if you really want to come to the town, then work with us, compromise with us and set a new date. If it was July 1st or if it was June 30th, whatever it may be. But unless Chairman Daniel received anything, I didn't receive anything saying, can you just hold off? Let us get through the budget portion and let's have that conversation. I never received any of that, that response, which is highly disappointing because everybody makes an excuse. And it showed me a lot this evening of who's here and who's not here from the state to make it work with us. And obviously there's a lot of frustration. One of the comments that was made is sometimes we go off track. Well, this is what happens. We don't listen. Then you don't participate and you're not really worried about what's going to happen next. So I, talk away. I have no problem at that point in time. I'll chair do what he's supposed to do, but have a conversation about it. This is what happens when you don't come up here and start participating. And I'm frustrated myself, the fact that nobody said, Dave, can we change this date? Can we take a little date? I can make it this date. Work with us, whatever it may be. Nope, can't make it. Unfortunately, this is a bad date, even after I was promised at one point someone would be here. So again, I'm very frustrated. They did have an opportunity to do it. It was not a strong arm email that the chair sent off at all. It was, it was what it was. That's all I have right now, but I'd like to listen to the residents too as well.
Just a quick comment. I'd like to listen to the residents. The amazing thing is in all the years that I've been involved, never have I seen an issue where the whole town is on the same page. Building schools, there's, there's a group over here and a group over here. Want to build the fire stations, a group over here, a group over there. You want to increase the insurance, you have 60, 40, 70, 30 people split. This is one issue. I don't have one citizen telling me that we should keep it this way. The, the town is actually unified over this issue. And it's the first time, as long as I've been in politics, where no matter who you are, what walk of life you are, you believe that they should go. So moving forward, I think that this is a good, good unity for the town on a bad issue. But moving forward, I think we need to, to stick together and, and take on Boston. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. I'd like to hear from the citizens of town that are here. Please remember that this is not a venue this evening where if you've, if you've had an issue with a teacher or a principal or some other type of a, of a personal issue of that sort, this is not the venue for that. Not that we wouldn't want to hear it, but this really isn't the venue for that. That's something that needs to be taken up within the district and people within the district have to have the opportunity to address your needs and address the needs of your, of your particular children. This is more of a generalized, larger overarching type of situation. And if, should you wish to come up and speak, I'll be happy to have you come up and speak. Please be careful to limit your comments to, to that side of the issue rather than to the previous side that I just mentioned. So thank you very much for that in advance. Mr. Shenya.
Thank you, Chairman Daniels. George Shenya, Theresa Rav, Southbridge. I came to this meeting tonight excited, excited to the fact that council was taking issue with a problem that we have in our community and inviting the people that matter most, the citizens of this community. It was also exciting to know that they invited everybody from the governor's office to the senator and state rep that represent us. But coming here tonight, it's very disappointing to see none of them here. No disrespect to Senator Fatman's aide, but we wanted to hear from the senator, the state rep. I didn't want to hear from the aide to say, we'll get back to you. It's, it's an important issue that has this community in turmoil and for them not to be here is very disappointing. They know that the receivership here in Southbridge is a field problem and they know how important it is to us. We spent $34 million this year on the school budget. During the budget process, Dr. Valar spoke about some of the problems that he had in the school. Retention, teacher retention, leadership in the elementary schools, principals, those kind of things, the turnover rate there. So my question to Dr. Valar was, where I came from, when you have a field system, when you have leaders underneath you that are feeling, it only shows one thing. The top echelon is feeling and it trickles down. We have teachers that want to teach here in Southbridge. They're not leaving here because of the money. They're leading, leaving here because of the lack of respect that is shown to them as educators for our community. Some of these teachers want to really teach, but they teach in fear. They teach in fear if they're outspoken to the leaders of the school that they're going to be terminated. So they don't say nothing. I don't have children in the system, but I got grandchildren. I want them to be able to be educated like I was. I don't think I was a bad product of this community in the, in, in Southbridge here. I've been a proud member of this community and it's disappointing to see what is happening in our schools. We have people that really want to try, but it's disappointing when we have our elected officials, the people in Boston that run the schools and even our governor. Now, the governor can say she doesn't know what's going on, but she ran on the ticket of better education for this Commonwealth. Three school systems are in receivership, so she knows what receivership's about and she can't have a representative here to help. It's disappointing. I've got one idea that will make this state wake up and listen to this community. On May 22nd, you as counselors, vote no on the school department's budget. Hold back that $34 million and tell them, listen, you want to run it? You pay for it. Hold it back. We know they're going to get the $34 million, but if you take a stand as an elected officials of our community and say no, we're not going to pay the bill, somebody's going to wake up. So I implore you to continue your efforts like tonight and get our elected officials, get our people that we pay big money for in Boston that runs these, the commissioner of education, and get to our governor. I always was one not to, I don't believe in civil disobedience, but I believe in protest. And if it takes us being out front and making a nightmare on Elm Street come true, then we need to do that. We need to get to the governor's office and the Department of Education and say, we've had enough. We've got to take our school system back and we have to control it. Again, thank you, councils for doing that, but consider that vote on May 22nd and say no to the school budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know there's a limit on time, but I hope you'll indulge me because of
Go right ahead.
My comments. John Jovan, 80 Highland Street, Southbridge, Mass. So I'm, I'm here tonight to talk about my side of the story when it comes to the dealing with the receivership. I have a long history and everybody I think knows the passion that I have for the Southbridge Public Schools. I'm a product of the Southbridge Public Schools. My three children are all very successful. My wife transports children to the Southbridge Public Schools every day, has done so for about 20 years and deals with a lot of children. I've had a niece that was a teacher in the school system that left to leave to another district and a daughter-in-law who currently teaches at the middle school. So I hear the variety of different aspects of what goes on in the community for the public In regards to the elected officials that are not here, they have to answer for themselves. But I do want to give credit to Senator Fatman's office for sending a representative because he simply could have not shown up and not sent anybody to hear our message. Senator Fatman was, or has been, one of the only leaders that I've been able to reach out to as an elected official in Southbridge to ask and plead to have somebody from the state at least come and have a dialogue with us regarding receivership. Senator Fatman's office was able to schedule a meeting, the secret meeting that took place a little over a year ago. When I was elected, I was, I served, I had the pleasure of serving on the Southbridge School Committee for approximately 12 years, chairman for seven, lived through bad, good, very good, and then the effects of receivership. Then I decided to join the Southbridge Town Council and was grateful to be elected chairman in my first term. And my goal at that time was to see what we could do as a community to bring us out of receivership. Because I looked at the previous reports and I knew what, because I lived every day of what we did as a community in the Southbridge Public Schools. What our leadership was doing in those schools, what we as a committee, school committee with my good friends that serve now, as to how could we best bring tools to the Southbridge School District to improve performance in our district? And we said, we, okay, curriculum was an issue. We had a superintendent, we worked on curriculum and we worked very aggressively on curriculum. And then went to the town council and said, we need money to implement this curriculum. And the town council gave us $100,000 and said, here you go. And we were able to integrate English and mathematics and change programs. Then we said, we need technology. And the town council gave us hundreds of thousands of dollars in one year to improve technology. And then I read a state report that said, oh, the Southbridge School Committee and the town of Southbridge don't get along. And I sat there as the former chair and the chairman said, wait a minute. Every time we went to the town and said we needed something to improve our district, they gave it to us. So we had this magical report that said, we're going to go into receivership. So when I became chairman, I said, my goal is I'm going to put the past behind us because I can't change the fact that you put us into receivership. But how is we as a community and community leaders going to bring our district back out of the receivership to local control? And that was trying to recruit members of a school committee, to have a full committee to start working together, to say, okay, here's a school committee state, they're eager to learn and we want to move forward. And we implored with the senator, get us a meeting with the commissioner. We want the commissioner to come to Southbridge and meet with us. Dr. Valar, get us the commissioner. We want to meet with him. It took almost two years to finally get that. Well, no, I'll take that back. They scheduled a meeting with the commissioner and a group of people in Boston and Senator Fatman has gotten two meetings with us with the commissioner. That's why I'll, I'll greatly support Senator Fatman in this, in God and his office. The first meeting was a Zoom meeting in August for one hour that they gave us. And we said, we want to talk about how can we get our receivership? What is it going to take? One hour Zoom meeting, they called it and all we got was, this is everything the state is doing. And it was really more or less blah, 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 here you go. And that was it. Okay. So we came back and said, we want another meeting. Get us another meeting. We had the second meeting and we, my goal was, at the time Chairman Daniel was the chairman of council, I was chairman of education, human services. We wanted a meeting with the full school committee and town council. However, that would have necessitated a public meeting and the commissioner would not agree to it. They didn't want to have a public meeting. So our thought was, let's get the next best thing, at least get a dialogue going with the commissioner. So we went in with the commissioner and again, it was, this time he was more receptive to hearing what we wanted to say because it was in person at the middle school. And I said, look, Commissioner, we want to come out of receivership. What is it going to take? What is the end game? Because that's what everybody keeps asking. What are these steps going to take? What is it going to look like? And I apologize to Chairman Daniel because I monopolized the conversation with the commissioner. Because like I said, is you got to know the history. And I'll, I'll say this publicly because when I became a member of the Southbridge School Committee, Council Lousa came on, every first meeting I'd hear, he said, you got to know the history. And I would go home and tell my wife, Scott will his history. Every time I turn around, he says, you got to know the history. And now I fast forward 15 years, 20 years later in public service here in the town of Southbridge and I look and go, you got to know the history because you got to live it. You got to know it. So I went to the commissioner and I said, you know, Commissioner, I'm going to tell you that report. And I laid it all out. I said, originally we were hiring a superintendent of schools and the former commissioner, Mitchell Chester, Cheston Mitchell, Mitchell Chester. He had a candidate that he wanted the town of Southbridge to handle, to hire. And he left a voicemail going, Mr. Chairman, I was chairman of the school committee. That's the best candidate that we have. And I came back and I said, well, Mr. Commissioner, if he's the best candidate that's out there, how come he's not a superintendent anywhere else? And us as a school committee went out and did those background checks and came to find out that there was a reason he wasn't a superintendent. But again, I told the commissioner, hey, look, it's all the past. I'm upset about the way the receivership, again, tell us what we need to do. I said, you got a, a school committee? You have a full school committee? What are you going to do to train up and give capacity to the school committee to give us the tools to take over the district or retain the district or give it back to us? Because you knew after seven years of no school committee, that's a lot to learn. If you want to be a good elected official or a good town official, serve on a school committee because you learn a lot. You're doing collective bargaining, you're doing policy, no difference. I've been served on both sides. So now I can say, school committee is a lot harder than being a town council and a lot more work. I said, but we got to train those school committee members. And I, I get it, Commissioner, you're not going to turn around and say, here is your school district tomorrow, but what steps are you going to provide to us to be able to get to that step? what steps are you going to provide to us to be able to get to that step? And I said, "No deference to receiver Jeff Vilar because a lot of people have said, 'I'm the biggest fan of Jeff Vilar,' which I am. I think he does a good job, but it's not Jeff Vilar's job to train up the school committee. It's the state's job." And I'll just leave it at that. And this is where the frustration, I think, lies with you and with everybody else, is the commissioner said to us, "I'll be back. I'll think about a plan. Perhaps we could come up with some kind of quasi-group that could start the transition, and we'll see what we can do. But I can't make any promises." And I'll go public now because it's been too long. He said, "Please keep it kind of quiet because I don't want it out there right now." But now, after a year of no action and his desire not to come here, I think it needs to be said. He wanted to give us some capacity to come back, and for them not to come here or at least send a representative is telling. And you look at the other districts that are in receivership. There are three: Lawrence, Holyoke, and Southbridge. Lawrence is the longest, probably about 12 years. Holyoke is a year ahead of us. And nobody had, Lawrence started a plan, but they haven't completed it, and Holyoke and Southbridge are nowhere near. So state, you took districts over because of a law that took place in 2010. You thought you could do it, and they find out it's way too hard. So that is the history, and I support trying to get dialogue. Now, holding back $34 million is not going to make a difference because the state's just going to tell you to pay it anyway. And the majority of that money is state aid. So that's state money. You're only taking out state money. I think it is a campaign of politics, I guess, to get the message out here and start at the local level and to perhaps search with media to say, "Hey, what are these districts doing with receiverships to assist these local communities to get back to where they need to be?" So I would support that and go from there. So thank you for the indulgence on my time.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to Mr. Jovan. You know, back in 2018, I think it was June or July, probably July when we first came on board together. You know, I didn't know anything about municipality government, never done it. A military guy, and it's, you know, it's a lot easier sometimes to take care of business right away instead of the red tape, which civilian side seems to love and keeps on purchasing. But I listened to Jack on conversations, and, you know, one of the biggest things was, "How was he going to help the schools and the town?" And he met with Dr. Vilar, met with Dr. Vilar. We'd had great conversations and got me rolling with Dr. Vilar, but obviously not as much as Jack did. But when a man gets up here after four or five years of trying to help the community and help the state bring it back to our community, and then here we are today, speaking about the same stuff over and over again with no real representation from our state assembly, our commissioner, or anybody else, you know, and for him to get up here and say stuff that, you know, who put his heart and effort into this whole thing, a lot of man hours with the receiver and the state, for him to come up here and say, show the frustration that a lot of us feel to this day. I applaud the man for doing what he did and still able to somehow or another convince me to continue to work on that relationship with the state, even if it has to be pressure upon pressure upon pressure upon pressure. So I thank you, Jack, for your effort and your service to the community. Thank you.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, in my meetings with Dr. Vilar, I got a lot of great information. He spends time with you. If you want to go there, I've taken, Counselor Marquetti came with me, Counselor Adams would be there. We would have meetings. We did walkthroughs. We did walkthroughs of the buildings with no announcement to the students. I think the issue is, you don't hear it translated to, into the public about what's going on in schools. And that's always been a frustration when it comes to the schools. So it's not, it really is indictment on the state not having a plan than the actual receivership. Because I think you hear certain pockets in the school district are doing very well. Why don't we couple that with how we're going to come out to the, out of the receivership as well? Thank you.
I just want to take a quick moment just to thank Jack Jovan for his years of service. The one thing you cannot buy is experience. It's something you've got to walk a mile in shoes in order to live that situation of a takeover. It's something you'll never forget, but also understand what happened and where do we go from here? We know Vilar is in charge, and we know that the problem is at the state level because there's no light at the end of the tunnel. And we just want the light at the end of the tunnel and say, "What do we have to do to get out of this?" And they don't have the blueprint. But Jack, thanks for years of quality service. Thank you very much.
Very good. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Rivas?
And I just want to acknowledge that I didn't know earlier that there was a representative or an aide from Senator Fatman's office. I am curious to see if Senator Fatman has signed on to the Thrive Act that has been filed by various legislators and has been informed by the Lawrence delegation where they're talking about amending the law around receivership and doing away with this form of receivership. And I would be curious to see if Senator Fatman and Representative Durant are going to sign on to that bill. I don't see their names on it as cosponsors, but I do see that the Mass Teachers Association is in support of the Thrive Act, and it's something that, you know, as a community, we should be putting pressure on our legislation to pass this act and to end receivership in the form that it is right now and to create local control and how to monitor and determine improvement for school districts. And so I just am curious about that. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Mr. Buxton?
Thank you, Kevin Buxton, 149 Everett Street. I don't typically get into the subject of schools or anything, but I did give some thought to what I heard the other night. Actually, I'm shocked. I assumed this place was going to be packed. The subject that caught my ear last night was no line item budget. Now, I've seen plenty of budget seasons in this place with everybody carrying a notebook about this big. So to hear that the school system is suddenly just saying, "We just want the money. We're not telling you where we're spending that." I thought the line item budget was part of our charter, and now I would question, "Why is it that we're not getting a line item budget from our school system, even in receivership? The receivership should still follow by our charter." Putting it to the voters is a good idea. It's a good start. But what we need to do is we need to put it to the people who aren't voting. Mr. Fatman, Representative Fatman and Durant don't see us as citizens. They see us as voters. If we don't have a strong voting electorate, well, I'm not going to spend a lot of time campaigning there. Even if everybody voted for me, it's still not worth it. Voter registration is essential in many aspects of the town's operation. I've been spending the last two days collecting some signatures, and it's a, I've also been collecting some disappointment.
Sir.
Okay. I can't speak to that. The number of people I've talked to lately who say they're not registered, they don't care, is saddening. Like I said, going to the ballot is a good start. Every time Fatman and Durant has office hours here in the town hall, there should be a minimum of 50 or 60 people showing up. They don't have to say anything. They just sit there and stare at them. Now, of course, typically they don't show up. They have an assistant. And it's just the beginning. The only way you're going to show them, get their attention, is with a mass of people. Some of you might recall, I lived through it, the site assignment hearing. I'm sorry to say, we filled this room to the point, we had to move to the West Street School auditorium, and that was over our trash. We need to fill this room with citizens, and even if the representatives aren't here, at least they'll know there's a mass of people gathering together in Southbridge who want answers and want an end to this receivership. I think I'll end with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Rivas?
I just wanted to clarify about the budget and the line item because that was my statement. What was presented to the school committee didn't have the line items. What was presented to the town or sent to town council did have line items.
All right. Excuse me. What was presented to...
The school committee.
To the school committee had line items? No line items?
So it went...
I still, I don't understand. Why wouldn't they have line items for the school committee as well?
That was my question.
On the budget issue, I recall back that it always used to be 50%. 50% of the town's operating budget went straight to schools. And there were, I remember debates and times where some of the old timers would say, "Well, why don't, why don't we, they don't need all that money. They don't need all that money." Yes, we found out the state mandates that that particular amount has to go. So the 50%, if they're asking for $34 million right now, I would have to assume that the overall budget for the town is 68? Or is, are they asking for more than 50% of our total operating budget?
It's 50%. It's 50%. Counselor Ryan, you wish to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to give clarification because I did receive an answer when I was on the school committee because I requested the detailed line item budget, and I was told it was not needed for me to make my decision. I disagreed with that sentiment then, and I disagree with it now.
Are there any other citizens that wish to address the council?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Rivers. I reside at 92 Harrington Street. This meeting tonight was so that we could hear from the parents and the teachers, the educators that teach our children in the Southbridge Public School System. Because a gun was brought into the school on March 13th by Eric Diaz, who's 20 years old, a guy brought a gun into the school system, and he thought it was a big joke. Thought it was a big joke. He was able to get the gun into the school system for several hours. I won't say exactly how many hours because then Chief Woodson's going to come up and dispute that with me. But it was in the school. The thing is, the joke's on him because we all know now what happened, you know, after the fact. We got the information. It filtered down. It came out. But we know now what happened. So the joke's on him because we're not going to allow this to happen again in our school system. We're now going to be watching going forward what happens in our school system. Dr. Vilar, you're an autocratic leader. There's no room for an autocratic leader here in Southbridge. You should have came tonight. You should have listened. You should have let the parents and the teachers talk, but you chose to just not even give us any of your time. Shame on you. But we're here. We're not going away, and we're not going to allow this to happen anymore in our school system going forward. Chief Woodson said he's going to protect everyone in this town. I believe him. He said we're safe. I believe him, and I know he'll do his best to make sure this doesn't happen again. I'd like to see more active training for teachers, for all educators, for the staff, take place going forward. I'd like to see more mock drills take place in the school system going forward. But most of all, I would like to see this stop going forward, these type of occurrences in our school system. And I would really like for the school system to be coming back to town. It's time, these three-year citrical turnovers from DESI every three years, another three years, another three years, another three years. We're now in the third cycle of that three year, so we're going to be going to nine years. I haven't seen really any progress, and my tax dollars are paying for this. I'm a homeowner here in Southbridge. I've been a homeowner for a long time, and my kids have gone through the school system. I have a niece and nephew right now in that high school, and it broke my heart to know they were there that day. Broke my heart to know they could have been hurt. There should be no guns, no, no guns anymore going forward. Zero, zero guns. I hope it never happens again. I don't want to find out after the fact that it happened again because I'm here and I'm watching. So I would like to see some parents come up. I'm not sure if there are any parents left because I know I've been watching people walk out, but I would really like to see parents and teachers, even if you're not in this town, come up. You are welcome to talk here. That was one of the issues I heard. Teachers wanted to come up and talk, but because they were out of town, they weren't sure if they could. And I said, "You can come up and talk. The town council just has to vote to allow you to speak." I know. There's that rule. You can vote to allow them to speak. So I thank you for your time. I just, I spoke off the cuff tonight, but I'm very passionate about this town because I grew up in this town. My father taught school in this town for over three decades, and he was also a coach, and he always instilled in me, "Whatever you do in life, make sure you do it. Make sure you do it well." Thank you.
Counselor Adams?
So one of the discussions tonight was about the emergency preparedness as well that the chair had brought up, and the steps taken since the March incident itself. And we already know what has transpired since then, and we've been briefed. And again, I appreciate the chief even being here this evening because he has constantly spoken on this matter with facts and details of what transpired. And I too would like to see more Alice training, not only done in the school system, but maybe in the town hall and a few other places. But the fact is, I'm still hearing that doors are being propped open in our schools. And so whatever message is being sent isn't being sent hard enough, strong enough. And so whoever's doing those items, if it is actually happening still in our school systems, after the incident that happened recently in another state, happened here in our town itself, teachers a few years back, some issues that they had, we got a problem on our hands when it comes to preparedness within it. The optics looks like, unfortunately, the day after all this came out, the following week, there was some type of training. And I heard there was a lot of chaos that transpired. Maybe lack of training or the fact that sometimes it's a real, possibly a real scenario, and chaos does happen. But when I hear that doors are being propped open, not by administrators, not by, you know, whoever may be out there, you miss, somebody's missing the message. And I don't want to see something that happens in our school because somebody was just lazy to let a student in the building. So I just forewarn, whoever that may be, if I'm hearing about it, everybody else is starting to hear about it. That's wrong. That's wrong. And for parents and teachers to receive this brief and emotions go really high, somebody's not out there getting the message and they should be dimed out, period, and should be gone, out those doors as fast as humanly possible to set an example. So I'm all about Alice training. I've gone through Alice training. I've gone through hundreds of hours of close quarter combat issues and all that kind of stuff. It is real. It smells real. It brings a fear of God in you sometimes if you've never gone through it before. But you know what you're responsible for is, A, if you're a student, you get back and you go to that school the next day and you continue to move forward. If you're a teacher, no days off, you come back and you go back to work. Constant training will help you make decisions when nobody else can. So I applaud that we should be getting more training, provide more funds if we have to do it, whatever it may be. But to prop a door open, or doors, because you're too damn lazy, we got a problem here. Thank you.
Kathy LaFiori, 51 Mark Avenue. This isn't going to make me very popular with the rest of the school committee, but I wish that more of them had shown up tonight. Martina and I are the only ones here. I went to the meeting at the high school also about the gun situation. And I'm not saying this to pat myself on the back, but I've been to every meeting that, that has been held because I want to prove to the people who voted for me that I'm serious about how I care about the kids and the schools. And I agree with Counselor Rivas about the student rep. I do miss having someone here because they could talk about something good that was going on or if there was any concern. I think it's real important to bring that back. Some of the members of the school committee want me to, you know, I, I know the receiver has done some good, but we need to work with them, work with them. But we also have to realize that if, if everything was working so well and he was doing such a good job, why do we still have this reputation that we have? Things would be better. It would feel like we were moving along more. That's all. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council at this time? Okay. I'm sorry. Counselor Lazzo?
It's Jim and I just, my phone's blowing up and there's a parent that just texted me a text and I'd just like to repeat it for her if she's watching. She's very concerned. They graduated her son from Southbridge High School with a diploma. He cannot read and write. And her daughter, who now is 18, is not going to be allowed to go back to school because she's too old. And the gun owner that was in the bathroom was 20 years old. She doesn't understand why it's the way it is, but please take the schools back over. That's a parent, I don't know who it is, with a phone number that just texted me, there's a ton of them. I just, you know, you want to hear the problem so you can solve them. When we talk about the security of the doors, there's 168 cameras, something like that at the high school when we built it. There's one right on that door. And there's a secretary, well, there was a secretary in the glassed-in safety area where you would see that door ajar. And I share the frustration of Counselor Adams about the training portion. But the thing is, what's so hard about looking at the camera and say, the door's open? Please go close the door. Every time I've walked up to the high school in prior years, it was always locked at the buzzer. So again, you know, the front office staff, I mean, I, I really, I don't understand it. But, you know, going forward, it comes down to a management issue. You know, you want to beat up a teacher. That's, you need to, it comes from the top. And I think we need to take this district back and, or work with the state, whatever, whatever the options are. I don't think the state gives you a lot of options, as you can see today in audio. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Rivas?
And while I agree that we need to move towards trying to get the district back, I mean, I know that parents here and teachers are concerned about safety right now. Right? You know, it's going to take us time to get the district back under local control. And I'm wondering, and if the receiver were here, to ask him about what has been implemented. And, and I applaud and I appreciate Chief Woodson and the plans that he laid out and talked about when he was here the last time, that the police department would engage in and helping to create a safer environment. But at the end of the day, the receiver should be working with the school staff and students to implement, implement safety committees in every building so that the concerns from teachers and students about how they're feeling, people in the building reporting things like doors being propped open, or lighting issues, or a door not working, or a lock not working, those are things that a safety committee can, can talk about and delegate and report to the receiver or the building principal. You know, what are the steps that are being taken within each building and as a district to make sure, to assure parents and students that this isn't going to happen again? And our police department can't do it alone. They're not in, you know, they have resource officers in the school, but that's one person. And again, it is the responsibility of the leadership in each building. Our resource officers aren't in every building. They have to, they have to travel to different buildings when they are called for different things happening. I think that it is important to have the voices of teachers and students on committees, making sure that people are working together like a crime watch that we, we put together in a neighborhood. Residents report things to the department. I've been at crime watches. I know Counselor Adams has also been at crime watches. And residents, the police department can't do everything alone. They're not, we are the eyes and ears of our police department and we work together with them. And it is the responsibility of our school leaders to work with teachers and students to create a, a plan, to create a safety, plan in place for our, our citizens and our students to feel safe when they're in school.
Counselor Adams?
Sorry to be on my soapbox, but I think it's important to discuss as well, when I believe it was Counselor Rivas had brought up the, and Chair Student Opportunity Act and understanding where this is. I'm not, I'm not one in favor of throwing a lot of money at things and they don't seem to be working. Though I understand where this act came from, but I just want the town of Southbridge to know, and we've been briefed on this for the last few years, but this year alone, within our budget, we have to come up with an extra, I believe, $840,000 for this, this act. Now, I have no problem as a taxpayer, whatever I need to pay for, you know, to help our system along. But I would like to see if we're going to pay for this, what are the results for this? Just don't, I understand there's requirements, but $840,000, I believe it is this year, for a town like ours to come up with. And I'm willing to help our residents and our students, but that's a lot of money that just came out. Not surprising. We know the next year's going to be in the same ballpark. But I would like to start seeing where is that data showing that it's making that big of a difference for our students? So I just wanted to bring that up because it was talked about. I just wanted to make sure that the residents and the parents out here are understanding of that as well. And I would recommend that we have another council, a whole meeting on this as well and continue on as we move forward. That made my recommendation to the council.
Counselor Lazzo?
The debate of money is always going to be on the table with council. We are the, the board that, that supplies the bottom line for the school district. I think the thing that makes it very frustrating, I don't think it's a money issue. Our problem in our school district is not a money issue. You have a guy on one side in a, in a middle school, his name's Jeff House. You have a front office over there with the same entranceway, the same cameras, the same security setup as the high school side. When asked about the door, when, in other words, somebody took the gun out of the building after the incident, oh, they walk in and out of the high school side all the time. A light bulb should go on in someone's head and said, something's breaking down on that side. Because you don't see it on the other side. Now, the common denominator in a successful building is your building principal, which is management, which is under Jeff Vila. And when you look at it and you see a simple dress code, when you see somebody with a hoodie, where you only see this much of their face on the high school side, and you say, wow, what is that kid doing? How are you going to detect anything if you allow no dress code? So I think it's going to come down to management, management, management. You can throw millions of dollars at a problem. We built the state of the art middle high school. And as you can see, the best, the best building in Massachusetts is not the answer. We need the management. We need the control of the district. Thank you.
Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The one thing I really did want to ask, and I feel like we don't talk about it enough because we get stuck on all these big debates, is what's going on with our special needs students? Those are some of our most vulnerable students. And all the statistics that we've seen over the last couple of years show that they're getting worse. Those are the students that we're supposed to be making sure we're doing the most for. And it's one of those things that I'm, a lot of people, I benefited from special needs courses when I was younger. And the idea that we're not even doing the simple things to help lift the bottom up and raise all boats is very frustrating. And anytime there's any sort of questions on it, there's statistical point here, statistical point there. But it doesn't end up meaning that the students that are graduating or leaving the system with special needs are actually being met fully educated. So I hope to hear back from the receiver about what they're doing for our special needs students.
Very good. Any other citizens? Last call. All right. I'd like to take a moment to personally thank Ms. Helyer from Senator Fatman's office for being here this evening. I saw you taking notes. I'm sure you took a lot of notes. Please bring back our concerns to the senator and ask him to spread the word up at the State House about what our concerns are. This is a good beginning and if the senator can help us out, we'd really appreciate that. I want to thank the speakers that came to the podium this evening, the citizens, for their good knowledge, for their background. You add to the care and concern that we have for the, for the students in town, for the, for the children in town. And I appreciate that you were here this evening to, to let us know what needed to be said. To the council, thank you for being here this evening. I appreciate your concerns, your, your thoughts. And hopefully word will get out what our concerns are. You were very eloquent in stating what the concerns were and I appreciate that. At this point, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Adams, a second by Counselor Ryan to adjourn. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? This council meeting is adjourned.